February 3, 2015. We call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Cammer, here.
Here.
Carbonaro.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Shipman.
Here.
President Wallace.
Here. Got one item on our committee meeting this morning involves Planning and Zoning Committee. Chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight we have revised Route 59 and Sterns Road intersection improvements to talk about. And I think at this point in time, I'll talk it over, turn it over to Jim and let him go ahead and explain things in more detail.
Thank you, trustee Cammer. Just before I start off, I have given you more visually enhanced diagrams. We added some color to the IDOT drawings and so that you can go along with that. I didn't have them ready at the time the packets went out. What I'm going to explain is very simple. We've had this Route 59 and Sterns Road improvement project before the village board back last August. They gave us a diagram that basically was what's up on the screen right now. This is, and this revision is only on the east leg of the project. The remaining north, south, which is the Route 59 legs, and the Sterns Road westbound leg remain the same as we saw it at the last time, which basically is two left turn lanes in each direction and then through lanes and a wider cross-section of intersection, new traffic signals at all different legs, and dedicated turn lane signals that you can only turn during the cycle that allows for the turn lane. At that meeting, we had some input from some of our residents and particularly the shopping center owner who owned the northeast corner of Sterns and 59, where the Walgreens is at, the daycare center, and then obviously Brewster Creek to the north. That was the subject of discussion at the public hearing that IDOT had, as well as the shopping center owner, who's here tonight actually, requested that the village support his request to DuPage County, because this is a county road on Sterns Road, to allow access and rather than close it off in the original design, to allow access into a shopping center. The county has worked with IDOT design engineers and came back with the plan that is in front of you, which is called the Revised Design Plan for Sterns Road. Essentially, what they did, and this is in layman's terms, not traffic engineer's terms, the orange lane that is at this, where I'm pointing to, which is the south, which was used to be a left turn lane on the southbound 59, was reversed in the design and now becomes an eastbound left turn lane into the shopping center where the Walgreens is at and into the daycare center, which is just east of the Walgreens. They had to, they maintained, and then there will only be one southbound left turn lane. They had to maintain the geometry through the width of each side of Sterns Road. Again, this will be the same width, but it is, they reversed this outbound or west, southbound turn lane into an eastbound left turn lane so that you could go into the shopping center and into the daycare center in a dedicated left turn lane. That's the major change to this design that you did not see back in August. One other caveat with this is that DuPage County, if they will support this design, and they're asking for the village, both IDOT and DuPage County is asking for the village's support of this design, they will require us to prohibit left turns out of the shopping center going eastbound during peak hours, which is an AM and a PM peak. So those are the two, and I just kind of wrote it up there at the top of the slide. Yes, Greg?
Can we do stripes across so when they're turning into it, you know how if the light's red and you get everyone butting up, if there's a stripe there, they'll leave a space and cars can go when they're...
There is no striping. They specifically took that out. It's a design criteria because what they want is they want the traffic to queue up. Again, this is going to be a right turn, new right turn lane. They want the traffic to queue up as far as they can and get through the intersection during a cycle. So your right turns northbound will continue right here, your through lanes and your left turn. Now that being said, and that was an excellent question, our traffic engineer, who could not be here tonight, reviewed this, Mr. Coulter, and his, one of his concerns with this design is the queuing of the left turn lane. As you can see, these red things are cars. They don't look it, but they will, that he's concerned that they'll be queuing up past the intersection, as you pointed out, Greg, and will prevent the left turn in here. IDOT hasn't, and the county, they don't believe that this, at this time, because it's designed for current traffic, that this queuing will occur based on current traffic conditions because this left turn southbound on the 59 is the least movement of all these different configurations. His other concern is that they stripe additional tapering so that they break up this being, instead of this being a long left turn lane from basically the intersection of the shopping center all the way to Braintree, that they break it up past the driveway here where the daycare center is and then stripe it so that then you have another left turn lane designated going into Braintree.
At the very front of that, is that a hard curb?
This is not. At least at this stage, it is not a designed raised curb. It's just a striped kind of median, I guess. And this pavement, this lane will all be, you know, the same level. There won't be any mountable median or anything through here. It'll all be striping on the street.
So there's no actual barrier between the east and west traffic flow? I mean, there's not, or is there a gap for the shopping centers in two different areas? For the kinder care and for the actual entrance? And then there's some sort of a median that you can't cut down any further? You follow what I'm saying?
If you're talking about like in the flow of traffic or around the side?
Well, no, just in between the traffic lanes, is there, is there a separation between? Is there like a wall or a, no, there's nothing?
No, this is all level pavement. There is no separation. The previous design, if I can go back to it...
There's a thinly painted protective line.
Can I go back? But here, let me try to...
Greg, that's exactly what I asked, if they were to this stripe.
In the previous design...
This is my third...
Someone might just plow into them.
In the original design, this was a barrier median all through here, this black area.
Right, that's what I thought.
But the barrier median is coming out because this southbound turn lane is now going to be an eastbound turn lane into, into the shopping center and the daycare center.
If they didn't think it would be appropriate to have a barrier part of the way and then a gap and then wait for the cars to go in through the gap into the shopping centers and into the, and into the kinder care, I mean...
I'm going to say that they felt that it was better to not have any barriers there at all because of, there is a lot of turning movements and a lot of traffic, so I, there is not any separation between the driveways.
Okay.
Are we aware of any intersections in the area that utilize a similar configuration?
That's a good question.
That's a very good question. I don't know of any that have this kind of left turn lane. The previous design, our public works director researched some intersections and Randall and Sterns in South Elgin had a similar design with the dual lefts at all intersections and the barrier medians. That intersection is designed like this one was originally. This change, it only has come about because of the village's support of the shopping center owner in his request to have the access point kept open in his shopping center.
Well, obviously, we want to support the shopping center, but it concerns me that this is a somewhat unusual configuration. I would want to make sure that it works in the real world.
Well, I guess we could ask the county to see if there is any other intersections like this. I don't know of any. Even the Sterns Road and Randall intersection in South Elgin doesn't have, what makes this unique is this entrance to this shopping center is only 125 feet from this stop bar. So I don't, you might find other configurations where you have turning into an eastbound or westbound left turn lane, but this close proximity is what makes this unique. If you go on our west side, the west leg of this, where the Home Depot is at, that intersection where Home Depot intersections ran, west part or Sterns Road is much further west, so they were able to accommodate an easy flow into that. And then they kind of allowed the turn lane to go in there, so. But this distance is unique, I would think.
But it is a design created by DuPage Traffic.
They created it based on trying to maintain access to the shopping...
I believe this will work.
They do.
They believe it will work with the caveat that we also have the...
Limited times.
No left turn out during peak hours.
Yeah.
Because my question would be, I wish IDOT was here to ask them, but I know that's not an easy thing to do. Why IDOT originally thought that it isn't everybody's best interest to have the double turn lane headed westbound, but now they're, well, no, really, we don't need that.
Just talking to the engineers, the design engineers, originally, I think they looked at this design mainly to continue to allow left turns out of here because that was the biggest concern of the shopping center owner. And keeping this a dual left out and just putting a gap in the dual lefts, they did not feel that is safe. So they felt that they had to create this turn lane in and allow the turn lane out, but eliminate it.
I understand why they gave us the revision. I guess my question, and really, I guess I wouldn't necessarily expect you to know the answer, Jim, that's why I wish IDOT was here for me to ask them, is why did they say in the original designs, well, we really need two left turn lanes going westbound, but now since we've raised this question, they said, well, no, we don't really need two left turn lanes. That just seems a little silly and wasteful.
Took like two or three times to get through that light, and that's why they were going to do two.
Now Jim's telling us that they told him that that's the least movement that goes on is left from westbound to south.
Westbound left, south is the least movement at this time because again, it's for current, this is designed for current traffic, the whole intersection.
I'm perplexed by the duality of that, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah.
What trustee Shipman's saying makes an awful lot of sense to me, and I would definitely like to hear from our engineer because ultimately, you know, I'm not concerned about what the state or the county wants to do. I want to make sure we're doing the right thing for our residents and making sure that this is safe. And I feel more comfortable with our engineer rendering an opinion than some other engineer.
Our traffic consultant does not believe this configuration is safe. If you were to, he said if you were to deal with this intersection, if we have, if we're going to this design, that the design criteria that he put in there, those are the concerns he raised.
Well, Jim, if, let me just ask you this question then, from what you've said, if we have no other streets that are comparable to this, how can he make that decision when he has nothing else to compare it to?
I think, I don't want to talk for him, but I think he's looking at other intersections around the area. This design is safer than what we have now. If you look at it in that context.
Does our traffic consultant suggest anything else?
Just in this one, he agrees with the no left turnout, peak time. He believes we should extend that striping so that you don't have a constant, you break it up to go to Braintree. And he is concerned about the queuing. And that queuing, there's no design for that. It's just, it's going to be like you talked about where you have to let those people gap in there. The other entrance into the Walgreens is coming off north and then into the new right turn in that's just north of the building. And that's, that's how it was in the original design, is they felt people would go up that way.
I think that would be safer.
It is safer.
Jim, can you flip it to the queued up cars that are red?
Two blue signs up there that say mind the gap.
I drove this road for four years in reference to trustee Shipman's question, and I can tell you in all the four years in the morning traffic, there were never more than two or three cars lined up in that left turn lane.
I do it every morning, and there's frequently more than two or three.
No.
That's my experience as well.
That's the way I go to work every morning.
How early are you?
Around 7:15 to 7:30.
You turn south though, right?
I do.
Yeah.
I do exactly what those cars...
Yeah, it's funny that all of a sudden, well, this will work and we don't need the two lanes when that's what they said we needed at the beginning.
That was the original design.
The whole idea is to try to get it to unstack, clear back to Braintree. And when you're adding a lane here, two lanes actually we're adding, you're unstacking it.
I do think that there has been substantially less construction or less traffic now that the construction of the Beaver Pond drainage area, both at Beaver Pond and behind Home Depot, has completed because there was a lot of construction traffic and people who had different patterns given that. And I go that way several times a day, and I think that there's a lot less traffic there now than there was six months ago.
Yeah. The way that I looked at this, and I've been in a few of these meetings, is what it is now and what it will be if this particular design comes to fruition. And I would 100% agree with Jim's comment that this new design is safer than what we have now.
Agreed.
Because you've got more space, you've got less stacking, you've got, you've got the ability to come out during non-peak hours and make a left turn, and you've actually got a landing lane to come out onto. So instead of just coming right out into traffic, you've got that left turn lane that's dedicated for left turns where you're kind of landing and then getting into traffic.
Well, yeah, I would agree that I think any of these proposals is more safe than what's there now. I mean, now you may as well drive blindfolded, you're probably just as safe as anything else. But again, I'm just voicing some thoughts and some concerns. I'm trying to core down in my head exactly what it is we're trying to accomplish here, too.
Well, IDOT wants the village to sign off on either this design or tell them that we don't like it.
I under...
Yeah, sorry.
My question is though, by doing these designs, what are we trying to do? What are we saying? Are we saying that we, that the problem that we're trying to alleviate is people turning left out of Brewster Creek or turning left across Sterns to get into Brewster Creek? Are those our problems? And if that's our problems and we went to the original IDOT design that would prevent that, then what other problems are we creating and how do we address those? Is that what we're trying to core down to? That's my question.
I think the original problem with IDOT's original proposal was a shopping center killer because you can't get in and out of it during regular hours and, you know, you've got to go around the block to get to a convenience store.
And that's my question.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to get at. What are we trying to accomplish?
That design there would be very difficult for, you know, somebody to, so proposing that somebody from the west side of town wants to come over to Walgreens, they go in there, they go to Walgreens, and then they're going to have to go loop out and stay in that stoplight out there as opposed to going the other way down Sterns Road and go to the Walgreens on the other end of town. So instead of going through the shopping mall. So convenience, I think, is what I, is what I think we had an issue with, with the barrier median.
Jim, right now, when they turn south, the people turn north, opposite, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because some lights, they have this side goes and then that side goes. If you take the middle and make it, if they stagger it and I'm, you know, if you, if you take the middle where you can turn south or go straight, either one, that would have to be all at the same time, so just one side's going and then...
These are, these turn lanes are dedicated turn lanes only. They're not through lanes and turn lanes. So if you're, if you're getting the left turn signal, you're in here, you can just turn, you can't go straight. And that's how this is, that's how those designs are for all of those intersections that are similar. It's a left turn on arrow only.
Yeah.
The green ball allows you to go through only.
Jim, I would, are you done? Just a question. When we get to this stage, kind of the caveat off of what chairman, trustee Shipman said, when we get to this stage, DuPage has looked at this and it's their road, and they've said this design is fine with us.
This, that design is fine with them with the ban from our, we have to pass an ordinance for that.
We have to pass the ban for in and out.
On the left turn out during peak.
Right.
That's what they've said.
And the way I look at this is that, in twofold. What things can we make sure that we're doing to protect people that are driving? And what things can we do to make sure that the businesses are not unequally yoked with some type of a traffic pattern we've created? And part of the discussion, you know, do we, do we try to regulate and manipulate traffic to a point where we're becoming a nanny of how you drive?
Only downtown Bartlett.
Because people are going to drive crazy no matter what the road setup is.
What is the purpose of this optional or potential, basically?
For their self.
That, that slide, the last slide here, is an idea that our traffic engineer had as an alternate access, controlled access out of the shopping center.
So I could turn, I can turn left, come to the traffic light, make a safe left turn at Route 59 and Sterns and turn left and go eastbound on Sterns Road, not have to cross three lanes, make the sign at a cross and have somebody wave me over, and I can make it home in one piece.
That was his point of this. He, this is not in the current program for this intersection improvement. This would have to be an ask to the IDOT District One engineer. And obviously, since it's a signal that we're asking for, we may have to pay a large portion of this if it even meets the warrants.
And I think that's...
And he threw it out.
I think as part of the conversation I had with IDOT at one of their meetings, that they, wasn't Norwood still too close to the existing light at Sterns and 59 to have a light there or not?
That was one of their concerns.
Yeah, I think that was it.
That's, when I say warrants, those are the warrants for a signal, and I don't know them all, it's not being a traffic engineer, but I've been around a lot of them, but it's closeness to the other intersection traffic signal. This is, I-59 is an SRA, which is a strategic regional arterial designed to move traffic. And you've got also configuration of the existing cross traffic and how that ties into 59.
But it's just not a cost issue.
It's just not a cost issue.
I mean, in theory, let's say the village were cash flush and we decided we want a light there, we're just going to pay for it. We still have to go through the state to get that taken care of.
Correct. And meet their warrants.
Meet their, yeah, okay.
I think Roberta had a conversation with them already.
We've had some conversations on it. They did not include it. They didn't feel it was needed. So if our traffic engineers threw this out as an alternate for them to consider, but it's something we have to ask for.
Okay. Chief, I'm asking your opinion, which would be the safer of the two? If we're looking for a left turn lane on Sterns Road or if we can, we can put a light here where I could make a safe, two left turns and make it home?
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to this. I think I'd like to vote trustee Cammer's. Plus, I don't know.
I'm not a traffic engineer. I'll be tasked with making whatever decision you make the safest as possible. But there are a lot of moving parts to this, and I realize the points that you have spinning at this point. So clearly, the most safe design is the first one, but there are issues at hand here, so.
Anybody got an old Chevy? I'd really like to try this tonight.
I'm sorry.
You got one? We'll try to put one out of Walgreens tonight. Also, no, no lines.
There might be some people getting Dunkin' Donuts in the morning. Those are some long lines.
The Dunkin' Donuts has a lot of traffic on Norwood coming in and out of there.
When this matter comes before the board, the full board, for, I guess we're going to have a formal approval, I would like the traffic consultant to be here. I think it's important to look at the data specifically regarding stacking. And I want to talk specifically about this offset and whether or not his plan to deal with the offsets going to work. It seems to me that you're inviting somebody by creating that left-hand turn lane to head north. You're inviting people to do that, which is a good thing. We want to encourage commerce. But at the same time, you're encouraging them to make a left across several lanes of traffic. So I'd like our consultant to talk to us about that because you're right, we can't be nannies of traffic, but at the same time, I don't want to set this up to make headlines.
We'll do that. We'll have it probably on the next agenda then and have him in. Probably put it, is it all right if we put it on the next agenda for a vote, but have him there so you can have a more prolonged discussion at that point?
Absolutely.
Jim and Ranky, did the shopping center owner, did you have a comment? Dennis? Okay. Sorry.
Well, he's approaching. Real quickly, Jim, I don't have the drawings in front of me. West of the intersection, we have kind of a similar situation with the turn-in Home Depot. What did the IDOT plans call for that?
Originally, they had a barrier median. It mirrored this.
But...
And I, and, get my highway jurisdictions messed up. DuPage County, at this initial review, because that Home Depot entrance is further away and lined up with the one in Bartlett Commons, they put the striping so you can make the left turn, they put this left turn lane in there so you can make a, it's much further away from this bar, this stop bar. And they felt it was safe to keep that open. So they, and I think they would have done that here if this intersection, shopping center entrance, was over here somewhere.
Is this just a county thing? Because up in Cook County, where you have the Dairy Queen, you've got two sets of striping right before Lake Street, and that's, that's shorter than that.
This is, this is a county road, though. The east-west leg is the county road. They coordinate, they have a review of the IDOT plans just like we do. And, you know, some towns, if they don't have a dog in that fight, they just let them figure it out between themselves. We, because we went to bat for, I guess, our shopping center owner is a way to put it, we didn't have to do it on the west side because the county already did it for us. The east side, this is closer. So that's why they came up with this design with this caveat.
I would have to disagree with Jim's comment that he went, that we went to bat for the shopping center owner. We went for, to bat for the commercial properties in Bartlett. And if, I'm just going to say, I just think Brewster Creek is by far our most successful commercial property. And this is not the first time that IDOT has come up with a set of plans. And IDOT's plans are based off of what their current thinking is, and somewhere down the line is the interests of the property owners and the community. And so, but they, but they will work with you. So about a decade ago, maybe 15 years ago, I mean, they were going to put all barrier curbs all up and down Route 59. I think it was barrier curves might have gone on to Sterns also. And we in Bartlett convinced them to do the mountable medians, which left us to have the four corners we have there right now. Now, they're not the greatest four corners of commercial in the world, but I would hate to see what they would be if those barrier, if those barrier medians were not rejected rejected by Bartlett, rejected by the property owners and, and turned around. Obviously, this property, this plan is considered safer by both DuPage County and by I dot than the current plan for Sterns Road was, is. And so, I mean, we're starting with a plan that's safer. Can you, could you do something that would make it safer still, probably? But this is safer than what is currently there, and, and approved both by I dot and by DuPage County. And it's for, and it's for, for our shopping centers. And maybe, maybe more so for Brewster Creek, but I think it'll also help bring somebody to the Dominic Center. And we in Bartlett need this type of, of thinking. I saw an interesting story in the Daily Herald on, on Sunday. I, my company, we built a great deal of Hoffman Estates. And, and Hoffman Estates, we used to always say, geez, why does Schaumburg have everything? And, and this last, you know, why does Schaumburg have Woodfield? Why does Schaumburg have all this commercial? And Hoffman Estates had the other quarters. Well, in this last Sunday's paper, I believe it was last Sunday's paper, one of the former trustees who's running a gun is now saying, we have to be more like South Barrington, because South Barrington's getting called a commercial, and, and we're not, which almost knocked me off my chair to see that South Barrington is being considered a receptive commercial community. But, I mean, this is imperative to our, to our, our center. That Sterns Road entrance has been there for 24 years. I realize there has been accidents on it. I realize there's been some worse than others. But I believe the police chief tells 12 in the last year. This, adding this lane and this turn lane in this area, the waiting area, will be, do nothing but to improve that area. I mean, it's essential to the commercial viability of Brewster Creek. And, and I believe I dot and DuPage County agreed. Thank you.
Any other comments by the board?
I think we have someone over here.
Uh, sure, come on up. We've let one, we've opened the door, as they say, so.
Let's be, be just one. Richard Lewis from Braintree, as you know. It, it seems to me, it's kind of interesting here, that really neither plan addresses the real issue for the shopping center or for the residents of Braintree, which is the ability to exit the shopping center during peak time. And so, as I look at this, we create yet still a problem. Before, we had a barrier, you couldn't turn out at, at peak times. Now we have a no-left turnout at peak times. That's a huge problem. There's nowhere for these folks to go, of course, other than to try to cut down Braintree. And even that becomes a dangerous intersection when you have that much, much traffic. The idea of a stoplight at Norwood and 59 does in fact help solve that problem. There are examples, I don't know about DuPage, but at least in the Schaumburg area, of lights being even closer to that intersection, you know, between, between those spots. And quite frankly, as I've mentioned to some other folks, if I was going to put a, a stoplight, I'd actually move it even closer to the intersection on the common exit from this shopping center, but also the other shopping center across 59. Now you've got the value to both. In my discussions with I dot at the one meeting, there was some discussion that, well, if you put a stoplight there, that's really to the benefit of the shopping center and the village, and somebody else would have to pay for that. I think that's the wrong way to look at it. This improvement at the intersection, which is needed, is actually causing a problem for the shopping center, for Dennis's shopping center, and, and things. And so, it's not a matter of, there's a benefit here, this is causing a harm to that commercial property. And so, in fact, including a stoplight would make sense as part of this overall project. Thank you.
Yeah, just to reiterate, I think Mr. Lewis was talking about a stoplight, and I don't know if we've ever looked into this, a stoplight at the, in the middle of the center. That would connect both centers across. So, Jim, have we ever looked into any of that?
Our traffic consultant didn't believe that I dot would look at it, but it's, again, it's an ask to them. He felt that they would be, because this is further away and at a, at a intersection with a village road, that they might more likely be a lot, you know, would, might, like, more likely can include this in the program, rather than, as Mr. Lewis said, one that's just what they term private benefit, because it's two shopping centers. It's not on a village road.
I know, I've seen them on Barrington Road.
Right. Either way, it's an ask.
Yeah, similar situation, like when you're going down Barrington Road where Sam's and Walmart are, there's a stoplight right there to go into the Sam's Walmart. But actually, that road leads back to residential, too, I think.
Either way, we have to ask I dot whether it's here or there. Brent felt that this being further away and on a village side street, it would be more likely that I dot would consider it included.
If you, if you have the existing approved configuration from DuPage County and a stoplight somewhere in the middle there that allows people a safe way to exit, or if they feel they're comfortable and it's not peak hours, they can exit out the back.
No.
Right.
Plus, there's a reason why, I'm sorry. There's a reason why you see the Randall Road up by Lake and the Hills, there's like a million stoplights. Now, the retailers want that exposure, you know, they want to people, they don't want people zooming past their place at 45, they want people slowing down and stopping and then.
Yeah.
Soon, are they looking to have feedback from us, or?
Yesterday, I think.
Yeah, pretty promptly.
They would give it, they've asked us to give them feedback within 90 days.
Okay.
Because they want to keep the project in a cycle that would go to what, even though Governor Rounner has put a hold on I dot funds, this one, I think, got in the door, so it's a 2016.
Yeah, we checked with our lobbyists, and this did make it.
For 2016 construction, I believe.
And what would we need to do to pursue the stoplight? Would we do this at the same time?
We would have to ask in a letter to John Fortman, who's the District One engineer. That's what the I dot staff told me at this point. And he would have to okay it to be included in this Phase One, or at least studied and then put into the Phase Two Design Engineering.
So we need to ask for it, at the very least?
Yes.
That's right.
Okay. Any other comments? Then we're going to get this back on the next agenda.
Yeah, we'll put it on as quickly as possible and, and coordinate to have our traffic engineer here.
Very good. Then I guess that concludes what we have for planning and zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Cameron. And that concludes our committee, the whole meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
They'll move. Second.
Goodbye, Trusty Shipman, seconded by Trusty Martin. Will the clerk please follow the call?
Trusty Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Two years. Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yeah.
We are adjourned.